Thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. Here's how the process will work. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak, and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they're going to speak about. For this meeting, we have three registered speakers who will speak in person, and we have three who are virtual. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, can you please cue the timer for us? And our first in-person speaker is Mr. Richard Pettis, followed by Russell Seal. Okay, I'm going to call for Mr. Pettis one more time.
Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for my tardiness. I was actually sitting in the ante room and no one saw me there. So I apologize. Happy New Year and thank you. My name is Richard Pettis. I am the President and CEO of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here today to speak in favor of the CPS Energy rate increase as well as the regulatory asset adjustment. And I come here today not only as the President of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, I come here bearing the force of four other groups, including the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the North San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, the Real Estate Council of San Antonio, San Antonio Manufacturers Association, and the Greater San Antonio Builders Association. We have submitted a letter for your review that we just finalized this morning, so I apologize that it's gotten, it was a little late from when you all had the cutoff on Friday. But we all come today with a voice of unison and connection to the need to make these adjustments. We believe that this is not an expense, but rather an investment in an asset that we know has helped propel this community forward in a very substantial way and will continue to do so. And I think that the work you all have done as a staff to pare the rate increase down to the bare bones minimum, and the fact that you all have gotten the regulatory approval from the city, bodes very, very well on the need to move forward with this. We know it's not, the timing is not ideal. However, we also know that if you do not invest in an asset as important as this one, it will crumble, and that is the last thing we need. It's an economic development tool. It's an opportunity to grow jobs, and we are completely and utterly in favor of the opportunity. And thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today.
Our next speaker is Russell Seal, followed by Alan Monta Mayor.
Good morning, Board members and mayor, and I apologize for taking my N95 mask off. I hope everybody continues to wear one. Do you all hear me? Okay. I am speaking for myself, but I am a member of very many environmental organizations, and I have been following and worked CPS Energy's issues for more than a decade. My main purpose in doing that is to decarbonize our grid, worrying about climate change and taking actions as soon as we can do that. I'm a very, I am, first of all, I want to say I am in supportive of this rate increase. I was able to meet up with my nephew, Michael Garcia, who's an electrical engineer from our community, who is working out of Boulder, Colorado, working on big utility-scale circuits. He's not working in our community. He is now taking over and leading a team on developing microgrids for an international engineering company. We need folks like him in our community, working for CPS in and around to not have the brain drain we're having out of our city right now. We have to be competitive as a utility to do the very complicated task from developing microgrid circuitry, getting our energy use in commercial and residential building. This will be an equity issue for the entire community, getting these kids, 31 years old, making more than I made as a pharmacy manager, back here, working for us. So please, hire the professionals you need to get these two coal plants shut down in a couple of years. We can do that. Do it with gas or not, little hesitant of that, but I know as a community, we can get it done if you get the professionals here necessary to make it happen. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Alan Monta Mayor, and then we'll transition to the virtual speakers.
I'm Alan Monta Mayor, Chairman of the Alma Group of the Sierra Club. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, for keeping the lights on, keeping us warm on cold days, cool on hot days. It's easy for us to take these things for granted, however, it's no easy task, and we do appreciate it. 2022 is a year of change for all of us. CPS Energy will need to be aggressive in policies to keep up with that change. CPS faces numerous simultaneous challenges, including rising summer temperatures, more extreme weather events, the billion-dollar debt, COVID, change in leadership and personnel flight, delinquent accounts, and a changing business environment due to renewables, distributed energy, smart grid, fluctuating energy prices, and many other factors. You will need to select a bold and decisive CEO who can rise to these challenges and do so in a way that doesn't further crush the least among us. Ed Kelly asked a rhetorical question during a board meeting several years ago. He asked, and I paraphrase, "Are we running a business here or a charity?" Remember that, Ed? It's important to answer that question at this juncture. We are running a public utility here, which is simultaneously a business and a charity and everything in between, but always in service to the public. Never forget that CPS stands for City Public Service. In order to better serve the public, I ask six things of the new CEO and the board. Make, number one, make 2022 the year you formulate and expeditiously implement a plan to get rid of the scourge of coal in our generating mix. This is the right for the health of San Antonio citizens, right to help minimize the effects of climate change, and, in the final analysis, I think will be a good business decision. Retraining coal plant personnel may help bridge the current personnel gap. Number two, work on rate reform to charge more per kilowatt hour for those businesses and residential customers who use more energy and lower the rate for those who use less energy. This will encourage conservation, better spread the cost of service to those who can afford it, and make it easier for the poor to pay their energy bills. Work on decoupling so profitability does not require selling more electricity. Number three, increase energy efficiency throughout the system. This costs money in the short run, but megawatts pay dividends over many years. Increase energy efficiency by cooperating with SARS and City of San Antonio in many more areas. Number four, continue to increase renewables. I'll finish very quickly here, I'm sorry. Continue to increase renewables in your generating mix, including wind, solar, and batteries. This will pay dividends for many years into the future and mitigate the climate disaster we're heading for. Five, adopt many more EVs in your fleet and encourage others to adopt EVs with incentives, time-of-use rates, and policies that can simultaneously help air quality in San Antonio and minimize urban heat island effect. This will help the bottom line of CPS by selling more electricity at night when we have abundant and inexpensive wind power while mitigating the necessity of adding generating capacity. And lastly, work with the Office of Sustainability to implement all aspects of the Climate Action Implementation Plan. I know these are difficult tasks, however, I know you can rise to the challenge. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the departure of Ed Kelly, who has served on the board for many years. Mr. Kelly consistently viewed CPS as a business and was vociferous in demanding that CPS be run as such. Suffice to say that Mr. Ed Kelly helped us get to where CPS is today. I wish him many, many warm days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now transition over to our virtual speakers. Adrian, can you introduce our first virtual speaker?
Hi, Loretta. Yes, good afternoon. Our first virtual speaker is Al Ariola, followed by Terry Burns. Al Ariola, you will be unmuted now, and you have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board members. Thank you for your time this morning, or this afternoon. My name is Al Ariola. I have the pleasure of serving as the President and CEO for the South and West Chambers of Commerce. On behalf of our Board of Directors, representing the broad cross-section of our 700-plus business members, I'm here to express our support for CPS Energy's proposed rate increase and the regulatory asset adjustment. For the past 40 years, the South Chamber has been a fierce advocate of the businesses and consumers represented in our market. The low-cost and reliable energy that CPS Energy provides is a benefit to our businesses. Right now, across the nation, energy companies are having to invest in reliability and sustainability. CPS Energy has demonstrated its commitment to investments in technologies and projects that protect our environment. As a business organization, we believe that our community needs to identify financial resource to support such future endeavors. Therefore, we support CPS Energy's proposed base rate increase of 3.85% and regulatory asset adjustment of 0.8% as a mechanism to maintain the utility's financial stability, enhance resiliency, and maximize reliability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Terry Burns, followed by Brian Schill. Terry Burns, you'll be unmuted now, and you have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board and Mayor, and my name is Terry Burns, former Chairman of the Local Sierra Club. Today, you will vote to approve a rate hike, and Thursday, City Council is asked to do the same. I urge you to vote today also to approve the hiring of outside consultants to audit CPS operations and management. Some on City Council have insisted that any rate hike be tied to outside review. I'm frankly surprised that this board has not already done this months ago, perhaps having findings in hand by now. After all, Storm Yuri clearly revealed many of the management failures the recall CPS petition warned about. I would think you, as board members, would want to know how the collapse of CPS could have happened and would insist on knowing how you were kept in the dark. Surely, you can't accept the argument that the failures were entirely elsewhere, not when you have the city's own CEP report in hand. An outside review of operations is a small price to pay to learn how you could have gotten so terribly wrong. As fiduciaries, you must find out and correct the root causes of misinformation and misbehavior that led to this $1 billion debt CPS has imposed on us. You must change procedures and oversight and recruit new leaderships so these horrible consequences are never repeated. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next and final virtual speaker is Brian Schill. Brian Schill, you'll be unmuted now, and you have two minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Brian Schill. I'm speaking as a private citizen and CPS customer. I think the elephant in the room about this enormous debt is because it was accrued during the big freeze last February. I believe ERCOT is largely responsible for the financial outcome of this disaster. ERCOT oversaw the grid in which several commercial entities bought and sold electric power, and this speculation enabled by the Texas Legislature led to millions of citizens being billed sky-high amounts based on grossly inflated prices for power, not to mention numerous deaths. There is absolutely no justification for Texans to be at the mercy of speculators' profit motives, whether the massive outages were due to weather and/or human error. I fully support any and all legal and legislative action against ERCOT and the speculators that gouged the local power companies and the public during a time of emergency. Speculators do not add any service or value to consumers. They only profit from trading in energy. The grid must operate for the sole benefit of the public. I also hope that solar power users can be given protection from any rate increases granted to CPS. We have all invested heavily in electric generation, in most cases for existing homes, thereby not adding to the overall power requirements of San Antonio that any new construction would entail. And so, we've already taken on our share of the need for transition to renewable power production that would have to be borne by the public at large. One of these benefits for solar power users could include an increase in the credit awarded per kilowatt hour for those users. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. That was our last registered virtual speaker. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Dr. Mackey. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to turn it over to item number four, opening remarks from the interim President and CEO, Rudy Garza.
Good afternoon, Chair Dr. Mackey, members of the board. I come before you today representing our close to 3,000 employees who come to work every day, ready to serve our community. I want to thank our Board Chair and the Mayor, City Manager, City CFO, and their staff for this collaborative process to get us here today. We've worked with them for months as they've reviewed our budgets and our business need to arrive at what we believe is a reasonable and necessary request. We serve with a one-team mentality here at CPS Energy under my leadership, and, you know, we're all necessary to do the jobs we need to do to meet our customers' needs. We were challenged to look at this request differently in terms of the immediate need here and now, knowing that future needs will have to be addressed in the future. The timing is never right for these asks, but if we don't do this now, there's a greater opportunity for negative economic impact in the future. I say everywhere I go, you know, "How CPS Energy goes, so goes San Antonio." We're that important to the economic vitality of this community. Waiting could cost our community more later in terms of higher increases, as we've seen. It's been eight years since the last increase, and that's too long. This increase is about our customers and ensuring that we have the resources necessary to serve them with the service they expect and deserve. There's extensive work to be done to rebuild trust with our community, and as the head of this important community asset, that is my focus. It's my commitment that we will be a transparent organization that reinforces the accountability culture of our company while increasing our community engagement. Our team is committed to striving for cost-control excellence while keeping our rates affordable. However, we must be realistic that without this rate increase, it will be difficult to meet the reliability needs of this community in the near future. If I can, Loretta, can we go to the next slide, please? We're going to have a very direct presentation today so we can get to our Board members' questions and comments, but I want to begin the conversation today just by looking back. Since the last increase from 2014, we have, over those years, been singularly focused on being as efficient as we can possibly be. As we've stated over and over again, every month, we bring a cost-control presentation to the Board, you know, and have done so over the last number of years, to the tune of roughly $900 million of cost savings over the last nine years. That's how we've been able to make our financial situation work. Over the last two years, the pandemic and the effects of Winterstorm Yuri have been drastic in terms of the difficulties that they've created just for our overall operation, and still, our employees have done what we needed to do to try to keep the lights on, to learn from the things that we needed to learn from with respect to Winterstorm Yuri, and to try to forge ahead. We began a preview of our rate request back in August and have worked hard, you know, under the direction of Chair Dr. Mackey, the Mayor, you know, our collaboration with my counterpart, Eric, over at the city, our city manager. We have worked hard to find the right balance between, you know, our request, our need, and what we believe our community is capable of paying. And so, you'll see today that we've arrived at what I believe to be a reasonable request. At the end of the day, our goal was to seek alignment. There was no coercion of getting to a number in any way, shape, or form. This has been a partnership in the process of focusing on what we know and putting plans in place in the years ahead of coming back to address the things that we still need to work on. You know, I think the immediate need, you know, over the next, you know, few years, immediate discussions will be really around the pandemic bad debt, which we are still working to try to get clarity on. The future of our power generation plan and our resources, the Board needs to make some decisions on that, and then we'll be ready to move forward and make those investments. And again, the ERP system, our SAP system that runs all the brains behind, you know, the CPS Energy operation, we know that's going to have to be replaced. And so, while this request includes a portion to get the planning going, we know that's a $250, $300 million project that we will have to come back for. So this by no means gets us everything we need, but it certainly moves us in the right direction. And the other element is just the rate of change of what we've seen over the last eight years. When you look at the number of customers, when you look at, you know, how our peak system demand has gone up, the increase in assets, our system is continuing to grow, and we're working with the same revenue that we've been, you know, that we've had over the last eight years. These have been significant, significant headwinds that CPS Energy has worked real hard over the last eight years to try our best to manage, and that's what leads us to this rate request today. Next slide, please. I just want to make a commitment to this Board and to our community that my goal is to continue to just work collaboratively with our community. We know that, you know, Mr. Kelly, we can be a business owned by the city and a community partner at the same time. Those concepts aren't mutually exclusive. We can be both, and my intention is to try our best to run our business as a utility and to bring in the community, bring in the community to have the dialogue we need to have to make sound decisions. This request, again, is a near-term look. We know that this will get us some immediate financial stability that certainly we need to be good stewards of this asset, and this will also allow us time for community dialogue, as I stated, on future real critical issues that have been hanging out there for far too long. Next slide, please. What we're going to be asking you for today is a vote on the base rate increase of 3.85%. That raises roughly $73 million, and Cory will give more information on what that gets us, as well as the creation of a regulatory asset that will allow us to recover what have been paid fuel costs associated with Winterstorm Yuri over the next 25 years, which we believe is a reasonable approach to asking our customers to pay what we have paid up to date for fuel costs associated with that extraordinary event. That amounts to $418 million. The regulatory asset is being set up for the full billion dollars that we know, you know, we're at risk of possibly having to pay, but we continue to fight roughly $600 million through the court system that we believe is unconscionable. So we're not asking for recovery of that at this time, but the asset is being set up to deal with the full amount, which is the appropriate thing to do. Next slide, please. Before I call up the leaders of our Rate Advisory Committee and Citizen Advisory Committee, I want to just recognize the work that both committees have put into review of our request. I know it has been a challenge for them. They have spent countless hours educating themselves on our business and, you know, hearing from leaders of CPS Energy on how we intend to utilize these resources. In addition to the things that we've done to prevent, you know, a request of this nature for the last eight years, our committees put in a lot of hours, and I just want to thank publicly both the leaders of our Citizens Advisory Committee and our Rate Advisory Committee. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I am going to ask Ms. Luisa Caso and Mr. Bill Day to come up to share the CAC's perspective. Just to give you a little background, Luisa Caso has served the CAC from 2016 to the present. We're in a transition. Last month was Luisa Caso's last month as Chair of the CAC. She represented both District 1, and she was an at-large member, so she has been committed to us for a long time now, and she is transitioning the Chair over to Mr. Bill Day. He has been an at-large representative of the CAC since 2017. So with that, I will turn it over to our CAC Chairs.
Welcome. Item number five, Citizen Advisory Committee. At this time, Mr. Bill Day and Luisa Caso.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Appreciate it. Thank you, Rudy. Thank you to the members of the Board. I am Bill Day. This is Luisa Caso. You heard our backgrounds and introductions. I'll talk a little bit about the Citizens Advisory Committee, and then Luisa will talk a little bit about our resolution that we passed and how we put that together. There are 15 members of the Citizens Advisory Committee. The committee's been around going on 25 years now. 10 of the 15 members are appointed by each of the City Council members. Five of us are appointed by the committee to serve at large and represent the entire service area. On the current committee, there's a good mix of age diversity, gender, ethnic diversity, a large variety of viewpoints, and we have very good discussions. We meet monthly but have communications in between those months and have really good interaction with CPS Energy Board. The mission of the CAC is to serve as an independent sounding board for the community and a liaison between the community and CPS Energy. And it's very important to me that those two things, that we're independent and that we serve as a communications between CPS and the community back and forth, so both directions. We get very good briefings and have a lot of access and information from the CPS staff that we can then disseminate into the communities and talk to our representatives, but we also get information and viewpoints from the community that we bring back up the chain and talk to CPS leadership about. There's a point in each of our meetings every month where any committee member can bring up anything they want to and raise questions and concerns and get responses from CPS, and I salute the CPS Energy staff for their work with us and their responsiveness. One of the important things that we took on in this whole process was drafting a resolution in support of this rate adjustment. And Luisa's here. Luisa was Chair up until January of this year. She was Chair all of last year, so I will let her talk about how that resolution got put together, and then we'll answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Dr. Mackey, for having us here today. I'm going to put this down here because I know I'm vertically challenged as it is, so having that right there in my line of sight makes it a little difficult. So the process to develop the resolution that we are presenting to you today really was one that similar, the process that we followed was similar to what the RAC followed in that we had, since the month of November, when we came down to what then became a 3.85% rate request, we received presentations from the staff. So as the RAC was receiving presentations from Cory and from leadership, we were also receiving those presentations as a group. We held, as you heard from Bill, we get presentations monthly. We also had some extra, we had some extra meetings. We meet virtually due to COVID right now. We were able to have some additional meetings. We asked for some additional presentations, and we had some questions coming in from the membership so that we could have, that staff responded to. the, the membership so that we could have, that staff responded to. And in, we had a very tight timeline in order to meet and to develop this resolution. With the assistance of staff, we created a, and the permission, and we took a vote in late November to create a subcommittee, of which Bill and I agreed upon that membership of the committee so that we got a good representation and cross-section of the 15 board member, of the 15 members of the CAC. We wanted to get varying viewpoints. We requested and assigned different individuals to have their views represented in the resolution. We wanted to make sure that it was thoughtfully and carefully developed and that we had careful consensus. It was very important to us as the leadership of this, of this entity that we crafted this resolution, that it wasn't staff-written. And that was very important to us because we are an independent body. And so with that, we, as a subcommittee, we developed the language of the resolution, and we had some very thoughtful discussion about it. The items that we included that you will see in here and that we wanted to make sure were included were transparency, accountability, fairness and equity, and finally, care and concern for marginalized populations. That we wanted to assure that all of those elements were finally included in the resolution that you have. And so with that, the resolution before you was written and approved by the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Does it have a question? Ms. Larissa?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat that again, that you said something that y'all crafted very crafted that y'all really wanted us to know? What was the three things again?
Yes, the three things were transparency, accountability, fairness and equity, and care and concern for marginalized populations. And so in each of the items, in each of the whereas, you will see clauses that are dedicated to those elements of the resolution. And that is, that is the one that before you today. And so once that was drafted, we had legal review to make sure that we were in line with the, with the bylaws. We had some edits that were done for, that legal had made sure that we were following. But we also had a very clear conversation with legal that the edits were edits for legal matters, but that the intent was protected because we wanted to make sure that the, the language be of that of the CAC. Ultimately, we, we voted as a group, and the rate adjustment was approved by the CAC. 13 in favor, two absent. Regulatory asset was approved, 13 in favor, and two absent. So with that, I know we will stand for some questions, but I'm going to turn it right back over to Bill to close.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, this explains something about the CAC and how we put the resolution together. I would be remiss if we didn't also thank our counterparts in the rate adjustment committee, the rate advisory committee, sorry, and, and to say that we know that there are a lot of challenges facing CPS Energy, that this year especially, there are a lot of issues and challenges that we're going to have to discuss and handle, and we're looking forward to that. We, we have a very good relationship with the staff, with the community, and we are looking forward to being part of that. So if you have any questions, we will be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from board members this time? I just want to say I compliment you all for doing an outstanding job and for serving the community and, and being a sounding board to CPS Energy and your hard work. And I just can't say enough about, you know, the work that you all are doing and, and your support for this rate case. And I want to thank you all for everything.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Thank you, board members.
This time, we have item number six, Rate Advisory Committee, RAC. Mr. Reed Williams, RAC Chair.
Mr. Chair, just while Reed's getting set up here, I just wanted to express my appreciation to the Rate Advisory Committee, and certainly under the leadership of Reed Williams. I thought they have, have really challenged staff over the course of that process, and just publicly, I wanted to say thank you to Reed for his leadership and to all the committee members for their input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. First of all, let me just start by thanking a couple of folks. We couldn't have done this without the participation with the staff and with Ann Kennard. Great job. And our continued leadership and interfacing with Vice Chair Gonzalez. So we want to thank those people because this, this took a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of attention, and a lot of time. We started last May with the training on what utilities do and how the rates perform for the utility. We pushed through that, and then we got this rate increase kind of on our table. I can tell you, our process was a lot messier and a lot more contentious than anything I think anybody expected. I, I think that's good. I think that's something we need to get used to in our community because that's where we're going to learn something. I can tell you, I don't know how it happened, but you put together a very diverse and a very feisty group, okay? So it was okay. It stayed respectful, and I think it stayed between, kind of kept it between the ditches. But I can tell you, unlike other processes, ours was anywhere but unanimous. And while you have in front of you the count of the vote and who voted how, I would tell you that that's not what we were up there to do. We were up there to give you input. We thought about it a lot, and we gave you input. The only reason that there's a vote there is to get people to concentrate on what they wanted to say. And too often, we get something from one side or the other, and we don't get a broad-based input. I think you got that. Hopefully, you read the comments behind these people, from each one of these people. My job is not to stand up here and paraphrase what they said, summarize what they say, or in any way take away from what they say. Their words are their words. My job was to make sure that we facilitated those words getting to you. And hopefully, that happened. Now, if there's any questions I can answer, I will. But I think those statements that each one of them made were very appropriate for their part of the, for their position. And if there's anything else I can answer for you, I will. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Williams? Yes, Mr. Steen has a question to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for all the time you put in on this. And I did read the comments, and I appreciate that you want us to focus on the input. And I consider you a very impressive businessperson and great grasp of all of this. So I wanted to read something from, now I have difficulty, he's a very distinguished businessman, is Dr. Olafimi?
Yes, sir.
Osidelli. Did I pronounce it?
Absolutely. We call him Femi.
Yeah, you call him Dr. Femi.
We call him Femi. He's a good guy.
So I'm going to read from his comments, and I'd just like for you to comment, and then if, if Mr. Garza and Mr. Kaczynski, if you want to, want to chime in. So this is where he's getting down to the fact that he's voting for this rate increase. He said, "Therefore, my affirmative vote is driven by the proverbial big picture. The premise for my recommendation is inflation. Since the last rate increase in 2014, inflation in the U.S. economy has grown to more than 14% based on historical Consumer Price Index data from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. In other words, a service that cost $100 in 2014 would now cost more than $114. CPS Energy is requesting a rate increase of 3.85%. This request does not even cover inflation. Moreover, the operational efficiencies of CPS Energy, or CPS Energy has achieved in the past seven years can no longer cover the gap between the requested rate increase and the historical inflation in our economy. For this reason, I recommend the proposed base rate increase." Would you comment on that?
Well, I think, I think Dr. Femi says it's pretty well. I, I don't think there's much I can add there. If you've read some of the other comments, other people approached it from a different direction. I did. But that's the good thing about having, at the time we did this and voted, I guess we had 20 individuals that voted. And so I think from a perspective that Dr. Femi put in, it's, it's absolutely appropriate for him to say that. And I think that that was a factor. I tell you, from my perspective, I look more at what was needed, what was justified in the cost at this point in time, going forward. Rates are looking forward. You have to decide what you need to do going forward. So my look was not so much, as Dr. Femi did, not to take anything away from it, it's absolutely appropriate, but my look was looking forward as what the 3.85 would do for us to stabilize our organization, to get us in a position to do the, if you will, the rebalancing of our generation so that we can go forward with what we need to do. It was based on what was needed right now, what the organization needed to stabilize itself, and going forward. So my perspective was a little more looking forward, Dr. Steen.
Well, and I appreciate that. Everybody has different perspectives, but it's, that's an interesting thing for him to say, maybe for the community to understand. Mr. Garza, do you want to comment?
Yeah, trustee Steen. I had a conversation with him as well after the vote, and, you know, the commentary around inflation, I'll actually note it in my presentation as an ongoing risk. Generally speaking, obviously, historically, prices have gone up since 1980. Our, our, our rates are about 30% below what it would be if we just tracked the CPI index over that timeframe. So he's right in that we are tracking below that. To Rudy's point, part of the drivers that allowed us to go that long was the 900 million of cost structure we were pulling out of our business that helped offset increases in prices. But in fact, Paul Barham, a couple of boards meeting, board meeting ago, spoke to the rising, you know, rising prices of all the inputs to our business, and we're starting to see that in accelerated manner. So I think his commentary is, you know, definitely relevant, given the broader context.
One thing I would say, Mr. Steen, if I may, as I would read, I would have people read all of Dr. Femi's statement. It was quite good, as well as many of the others.
I would just say that every committee member had really, really good input, just like Dr. Femi. I mean, Dr. Femi is always so thoughtful in his commentary. He's thinking, he's always looking at the big picture. He brings a ton of credibility to the table, and every business owner, every representative of our, you know, community, you know, all look at it, all looked at this issue from their perspective. So, you know, I can go down the line, you know, and point to a number of, of perspectives that, that stuck out to me. But to, to Reed's point, they all had their reasoning for how they voted, and, you know, it was all relevant, you know, as Mr. Steen. So again, I just appreciated the honesty and the sincere comments of, of the committee because I thought it was very, very well done.
Thank you. This time, Mr. Kelly, you have something to say?
Reed, I too want to thank you for the tremendous amount of time and effort that you and your members put into this work. I have talked to several other folks that served on the committee, and they said that they indeed worked very, very hard and spent an awful lot of time on the committee. So I thank you for that. My question is this, that the fact that the CAC was working on the same issues at the same time, I think you took a deeper dive than the CAC, but nonetheless, you had two committees working on the same issue. In your opinion, do you think that your committee has now served its purpose and it should be dissolved? Or do you think there are, there is further work that needs to be considered, particularly in view of the fact that the CAC has been operating very successfully for over 25 years? I'd be curious about your comments on that.
Sure, Mr. Kelly. I, I have three. First of all, if you look at the charge in the bylaws, we are supposed to look at rate structure, and we're also supposed to look at generation planning. We did not get to do that in this rate increase. In fact, it's probably appropriate that we didn't because when you're making a rate increase and you're changing how the rates are actually distributed among the class of customers, and then how the individual class of customers are actually billed, it gets to be a two- or three-dimensional problem, and it's quite hard to do. So we still do need to look at how the rates are structured and how they are allocated among the class of customers. To that point, I pretty soon believe that, I assume that, I believe that pretty soon CPS management will conduct a new rate study, which is the second step. Once you determine how much you need to go forward, you have to then allocate that cost between the customers. That step right there, had to use a rather old rate allocation study. We're going to hopefully get that redone. The committee needs to look at that, make sure that those costs are going in the right place. Because remember, rates are just cost recovery. They're not making money. You're just recovering the cost appropriately from the appropriate class of customers in a manner that, that makes sense. So we still have to do that. Second thing, we still do need to look at generation planning. I believe that the mix needs to be looked at very carefully and very quickly because we, as we continue, which I understand the program is, to buy and contract for, not buy, actually contract long-term on power purchase agreements for more renewables, those are intermittent, and we need more dispatchable power. So we're going to have to understand how we can get in a position to have a reliable mix of power so that we're in a position in a few years to take on new technologies that have become commercial. The third thing that I would say is, the CAC is a very good organization. I appointed some really good people to it while I was on the council. I was supportive of it, and I believe they do a great job. I think the difference is, is that the group that's put together with the RAC are much more combative, they're much more, I don't know that they're much more combative, that's probably not right, but they are very opinionated. And we have, I believe, a very good cross-section as appointed by everyone, including some by yourselves, that we can get a broad view quickly from people and a lot of input. So I do believe there is a, a future for the RAC, but if the board believes there isn't, then we'll be, all be very happy to go back to our families and our own businesses. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Great job, and congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work and your time that y'all put into the rate case committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And as you see the individual members, please understand the hours and hours that they took from their families and to do this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I just, I'd be remiss, Reed, as you're walking out, just again, thank you for all the time and energy and commitment to this process. And it is a commitment to a process that's going to continue to unfold. It's, it's not lost on any of us what a unique perspective and experience and expertise that you bring to the table. So thank you very much, Reed.
At this time, we move on to, to our base rate increase and regulatory asset recommendation, number seven. Mr. Corey Kaczynski and Mr. Rudy Garza.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, board. I wanted to begin like, like several of us have done earlier today by thanking the, you chair, and thanking the board for your engagement and for your challenging questions along the way. Obviously, thank you to the Rate Advisory Committee and the CAC leadership as well. We've engaged with them for the last couple of months, and that's been, it's been excellent. And as Rudy mentioned, big thank you to Eric and the city staff as well for their partnership over the last couple of months. So I did want to open up my presentation and be very clear from the beginning and reiterate some of the things that Rudy may have mentioned. The request that we're going to ask approval for accomplishes several positive things for CPS Energy. It accomplishes near-term financial stability, which is critical for our credit ratings. It accomplishes near-term support for critical investments necessary for reliability and enhance resiliency. It helps stabilize staffing. And most importantly, it buys time to have the strategic discussions with the board and the community on the key policy issues such as generation planning, equity, and rate design. So the other thing I'd mention too, and I'll hit it a few more times, this request is not a one-and-done type of deal. We've made clear, and I'll speak to it, that on a go-forward basis, we anticipate taking a more incremental approach and, towards rate requests over the coming years. So with that, on the agenda, there are a number of things here, but as Rudy said, I will be brief and summarize our request, dive into the, the customer impacts, and talk a little bit about and summarize our request, dive into the customer impacts, and talk a little bit about going forward and the risks. Okay, so on slide number three here, as you are aware, there are two components of this rate request. Rudy alluded to them in his opening comments. The first is a base rate increase of 3.85%. That will achieve annual incremental revenue of $73 million. We recommend implementing that March 1 of this year. And for context, that is on top of an annual budget that we're forecasting to be about $2.9 billion next year. On the next slide, we've also discussed this previously, that incremental revenue that we identified allows us to invest in several near-term critical areas, infrastructure resiliency, which most of it is identified there. That goes to things we've spent the last couple of months talking about, improving our investments to our communications, upgrading our freeze protection at the power plants, not just for this winter, but ongoing. We also have investments in technologies, which we've spoken about at length. We have investments to focus on the substantial growth that we continue to see. And then lastly, as Rudy has talked about, our investing in people. We have nearly 400 vacant positions that we're going to work to fill as fast as we can, and support that to keep up with our community and the growth. So we've also been clear that this revised approach that we've talking about, as Rudy said, we're not here to try and resolve all of our issues with this request. We acknowledge that there are other issues out there, but due to the uncertainty around them, we're going to continue to monitor them, monitor them and report out to the Board and the community as they resolve themselves. So specifically, what's not included in this rate request, the early collection of the pandemic bad debt, so basically the past due accounts. When we began this journey, we had put forth a recommendation to recover over a five-year time period, the past due accounts. What that looked like in our earlier versions was about $23, $25 million a year for the next five years. What's happened since then was the city council approved the $20 million in federal funds to be, to be provided for those who need assistance due to the pandemic. So that helped fill the gap, and consistent with our strategy of buying time for us to think through some of these policy decisions, that was a big lift and improvement for us. So there is not anything included in this request for that. The other item is disputed fuel cost from Winter Storm Uri. $587 million of that $1 billion remains in dispute. So once we have resolution of those dollars, we'll communicate back to the Board and our community if there's any additional impact to the customers, but we are not recovering any dollars for that. As we spoke about at length, there's no, there's no allocation for future generation decisions, and as we talked about as well, there is no rate design that is being incorporated into this rate request. So over the next two years with this request, we forecast stable metrics. We have talked to the rating agencies at length over the past summer, and we've talked to them over the past few weeks as well, explaining our revised approach and them understanding, you know, the incremental approach that we are taking, and they understand it. Ultimately, we believe that having these stable metrics will contribute to our strong credit ratings, and as the Board knows, this helps continue that we have affordable borrowing costs, and that ultimately benefits our customers. The other thing I'll mention too, actually, before I go to this slide, you know, as I, as I talked about this incremental approach in terms of rate requests, what it really means is that in order for us to have a positive trajectory on our metrics beyond fiscal '24, it's going to be necessary to have those incremental and modest requests. So I don't want to leave this conversation, again, thinking that we're one-and-done. We show positive metrics for the next two years, but in order to keep up that positive trend, we will have to ensure that we continue to come back to our Board and to the City Council. So on the next slide here, on slide seven, this is the second component of our request. As the Board is aware, we were charged approximately $1 billion in fuel, but as you're aware, we also hired an independent third party to do an analysis of what would be expected as acceptable scarcity pricing in an event like Winter Storm Uri. So as a result, we have that $418 million that we have not yet recovered. So what we're recommending is a strategy that spreads the recovery of these vetted fuel costs out over an extended period of time, 25 years, that will allow us to minimize the impact on customers' bill. So currently, we don't have a mechanism. That's why we're having to take this vote here at the Board, and while we'll take this vote over at City Council. And we can see the bill impacts from that of $1.26 per month for customers, for average residential electric gas customers. So in summary, on slide eight, you can see the combined impact of these two components between the base rate increase and the winter storm recovery. It's a little over $5. That'll be, that'll be impacted on residential electric and gas customers. I want to mention on the next slide, you know, in consideration of the conversation around equity and utility burden, one of the things that we did include in this request is offsetting the base rate component for those customers who qualify for affordability discount. So what that means is, currently, the $12.30 per month discount will be increased to $16.14. The second thing we wanted to do to address that, address that issue was to increase the enrollment by 14,000 customers for a total of 65,000 customers. Now, I'll note, our residential customers who are not on the affordability discount program and our commercial customers contribute in funding this important program for our community. So recognizing that not all customers are the exact average user, we've provided a range of bill impacts on this slide. Depending on your situation and the season, you can see where you land. I won't read all of them on the page. I will note on the next slide here, this is a view of the impacts to our commercial customers. We have both our electric and our gas customers. And ultimately, for those that are listening, I want to let everyone know that on cpsenergy.com/ratecase, we have an online bill estimator for both residential and commercial customers. So while this is a static view, and we'll post this on our website, we do have a tool that'll help take a, you know, help our customers to see what a precise impact will look like. And that's new this year, so very helpful. Okay, as I've mentioned, as we look forward on slide 12, our plan is to have more, a more incremental approach. What that means, for the sake of forecasting, we've estimated coming back every couple of years. And I note this on the slide, and I'll say it, say it again, you know, this is subject to change, given the resolution of the many items that were previously discussed. And again, to be clear, this does not preclude us from needing to come, come back sooner, should the financial health of the organization dictate. And we will be sure to convey that and be very transparent with the Board if that situation arises. The last slide here that I'll speak to before I turn it back to Rudy is on slide 13. I do want to point out that while there are many benefits to this approach, there are still some risks built into, to that forecast, and I'll mention a few. We've already talked about inflation as a risk. Interest rates continue to be something that we're looking at. Supply chain challenges, everyone is feeling. And as I talked about earlier, the disputed fuel costs still have to resolve themselves. The past due customer balances resulting from the pandemic still have to play themselves out over the coming year as we resume our regular disconnect process. And I would say, we're seeing an uptick in COVID right now, and that may have unanticipated impacts to our usage levels from our various customer groups that haven't been built into our forecasts. So with that said, I believe that what we have is a very prudent request for our Board to consider. And what I would also say is that we will adjust the timing or magnitude of any of our future rate increases as needed, but we'll do so in partnership with the Board and partnership with the city. So I want to turn it over to our interim CEO, Rudy Garza. I want him to take a few minutes to talk about how he is, and our team, has created alignment on this proposed rate request and approval. So Rudy?
Thank you, Corey. And let me start by thanking Eric Walsh, who joined us, you know, here today. We, he and I have worked real hard to ensure that both of our staffs were working collaboratively together to get to a good place for the community. And so Eric, I appreciate all the time your staff has spent in review of our proposal. Next slide, Loretta. So we have had multiple conversations already with the city council. Those dates listed at the top of the slide show that three B sessions that we've been in, I think Eric and the mayor would tell you, those have been robust conversations, you know, three hours, two hours, and two hours worth of conversation. I think every one of them actually went over the allotted time. So I've spent a lot of time over at City Hall here over the last, of the last six weeks or so. The bullet points at the bottom are really what we've heard, you know. Are we engaging enough? Are we updating our communication approach? Councilwoman Harvardos, in particular, has been interested in how we intend to do that. Are assistance programs robust enough? All of these things are issues that our council is interested in. We have heard them, and we have worked with them to try to explain to them the things that we're doing to be responsive to their, to their interests. Next slide, please. In terms of outreach, while the 40 events that we have conducted to date, and we still have three more town halls this week that I will be specifically participating in, there is a multitude of organizations and a cross-section of stakeholders that we've met with. I want to call your attention to the customer communication banner there on the lower right-hand side of the page. We have sent both direct messaging, either through text message, voicemail, or emails. We've sent over 2.2 million direct contacts to our customers to ensure that they understand what is, what this request is for, and know where to go to ask questions. So I've stated from the get-go, my, my goal in the community outreach has never been to necessarily convince someone who otherwise would be opposed to a rate increase to, to, to want us to do that. I want them to be educated on the, you know, the need and how we intend to utilize those resources to serve our customers. Because at the end of the day, all, we exist for one purpose and one purpose only, and that is to serve our community with electric and gas service. And it's important that they understand that every penny we're asking for will go right back into the system that, that supports that, that responsibility. Next slide. In closing, I just want to make a few comments. We've avoided a rate increase for eight years. If, if there's, if nothing else strikes, strikes you, I would hope you would recognize that we are paying today's cost and recovering yesterday's revenue, and that is a challenge for our business. Corey has mentioned what we're planning to spend those dollars on. I think they're all strategic and critical investments that are necessary. We have worked hard to increase awareness, and that is not a commitment that goes away after we get past this rate case, you know, whether successful or unsuccessful, we know that we've got to continue reaching out to our customers. We have addressed community, customer assistance as part of this plan by increasing the affordability discount. We believe that's the right thing to do for those most vulnerable in our community. And we've asked for a regulatory asset that, that responsibly recovers what are substantial costs over a extended period of time that we believe creates affordability for our customers. We think it's, it's, it's the right thing to do. So with that, next slide, please. I would respectfully request the Board consideration on approval of item 7A, increase of base rates to, by 3.85%, and item 7B, I would respectfully request your approval to create a regulatory asset of up to $1.005 billion to recover the immediate $418 million that we have paid to date, for, for us to begin implementing those two increases by March 1 of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Any questions or comments for Mr. Garza? Rudy Garza?
If the, if the Board approves this, what's the next steps, and what's the overall timing on, you know, over the next several steps?
Mr. Kelly, great question. The next step is Thursday. We would go to City Council immediately with a request for approval of both of these items, in, in the exact same manner that we requested the Board. So the time period, the clock really started on this rate request with that first date that we went to City Council for a conversation on December 1. So that would be right under 45 days from the start of the conversation to when council would approve it, to ultimately get the approval done. So Thursday, council is voting on this. That's the next step.
Okay. Any other board, Mr. Steen?
So I'd like to go back to slide six. And these are three financial metrics. Somebody, either of you, tell us how these evolved and why they're important to the credit rating agencies.
So I'll let Corey give you specific definitions, but, you know, the first and foremost responsibility that me, as your interim president and CEO, you know, Corey certainly, and his team as our, as our CFO organization, is the financial health of CPS Energy. You know, we can tell by, you know, just by our financial metrics whether we're in a state of stress or not. And so when our debt-to-capitalization ratio gets higher than what we want it to be, and it's still not, it's 60%, which is where we want it to be, but, you know, we have a plan to get it there, you know, over the next five years. You know, our ability to pay our bills, our ability to service our debt, those are all aspects of what it takes for us to, to be a solvent business, just like, you know, anybody who owns their own business. You know, you've got to have money in the bank to pay your bills, to pay your employees, and you've got to be able to, you know, to meet your, your debt obligations. So these are very straightforward, specific financial metrics that we pay attention to. And when these metrics get stressed, that's when the rating agencies will take a look and say, well, you know, either CPS Energy, you know, needs to be able to get the support of their community and ensure they stay in the right space, or we downgrade them, you know, to, and which will mean that we're paying more, you know, higher debt service costs at the end of the day. So, so these are metrics that we pay attention to on a month-to-month basis, Mr. Steen. But Corey, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
A cheering conversation, recent conversations with the credit rating agencies. And are these the three things they look at primarily?
Absolutely. These are the three financial metrics they look at, and we gave them the same forecast we gave to the city as well as part of this, this process. So they've, they have the same material.
Are there three, are there three colors? There's green, yellow, and red?
Yes.
All right. What does it mean that our debt, debt capitalization ratio is, is in yellow?
It means that we are slightly over the threshold level that we would prefer to be at, based on our rating. So we currently target 60%. So we're slightly over 60% in this forecast as well. The green means that we are comfortably above our threshold. So the debt service coverage ratio, just to run through them, 1.50 is the target for that one. We're currently thinking we'll finish this year around 1.6, and then you can see an improvement in those numbers next year. And days cash on hand, the target's of 150 days cash on hand, and you see we try and achieve about 170 days, which is a nice cushion. The debt capitalization ratio is one that I've spoken about at length with the rating agencies, about a plan to get that down to the 60% range within a five to six-year timeframe. And so that's built into our long-term forecast. So I put it as yellow because it is an area to, to watch. And so that is something that if, all the risks that I mentioned, if we have additional pressure on our financials, if things get resolved unsuccessfully with the winter storm, that we're not expecting, or revenues coming lower, whatever the case may be, we'll come back to this Board and indicate, you know, if there's an issue. But currently, like I said, I've got a subsequent trend arrow there in the very third column, because the, the intent of our forecast, based on that going every two years, is to work that number down. So in, in the fifth or sixth year view, we have that metric at about 60.8, 60.7 or so as a target. And so we're going to keep working to push that down. Hopefully, that's helpful, sir.
Right. When, when I got to this slide, when I was reviewing things, I thought, well, why wouldn't we be able to see historically, and then of course, forecasting out? But then I, you did do that.
I think we have that in the supplemental.
In the supplemental materials, can we put that, those up on?
Um, Loretta, do you have those by chance?
And I can tell you the page number.
Page tw-?
I think it's page 10 of your supplemental. Is, is the adjusted debt service coverage?
Actually, page 51, Loretta, in the, in the PDF. Page, I'm sorry, 49.
Yeah, PDF 49.
No, well, I'm looking at 47 if you're using that pagination. That's what I'd like to look at first. So it's 47, the, the, the lower number, but it, up here on the slide, it says 10, and this is of the, it's called rate supplements, rate, rate supplements.
Do not have it loaded. Okay. Give us just a second, sir.
I think because these three financial metrics are so important, I do think it's, it's critical to look at not only the historical average, but what, but what we're forecasting at this point. So it's in our books under, again, under rates supplement, supplementals. And then, once you get there, it's page 10 of that.
It'd be slide 12 in your supplemental material, if you want. We want to just talk to it, and we'll bring it up here in a second, sir.
Well, yeah, I, I want to start with, with the adjusted debt service coverage. That's why I mentioned number 10. And then 12 is the debt capitalization ratio, and, and page 15 is the days cash on hand. And then 12 is the debt capitalization ratio, and, and page 15 is the days cash on hand.
Mr. Steen, would you like to have, to start having a conversation about the material while we're waiting on this, or?
Well, I mean, nobody else is, I mean, I guess the board can look at it. I'm looking on page 10. And my first question would be, there's, there's a, a brown line that is running horizontally across that, the graph. What, what does that line represent?
It really should reflect the, the threshold of 1.5, so probably could be scooched up a little bit. That's to show how much we are above our threshold of 1.50.
And what do you mean when you say threshold?
So for our, our ratings, you know, I talked about those metrics being the three key metrics the rating agencies care about, and they specifically care about them in terms of being above the threshold that they deem appropriate for, for an entity our size, an entity that they're giving our rating to. So for us, that's one and a half times coverage on this particular one. So we target to be a little bit above that, so that we have a little bit of cushion.
So we wouldn't be under risk of a, of a, of a downgrading as, as long as we're above 1.5?
That's correct. So one of the focus points is to ensure that as part of this request, we get that, that metric bumped up. So like I said, this year, I think we'll finish in the 1.6 range. It shows 1.68 there. We've got two more months left of this fiscal year, but then we bump back up to close to 1.8. Then we go down a little bit in '24, but in the forecast, we, we put in another rate request. That bumps us back up to 1.84 in 2025. So we're really trying to, you know, maintain that level going forward, which is pretty close to the historical average that you can see over the last five years.
It wasn't in the written materials, but you did clarify that earlier, and you're clarifying it now. When you're showing these numbers, forecasting going out, you're factoring in something that hasn't hap- that, in other words, it, this is not done with the 3.85% only, that you're factoring in future rate increases?
It has, yes. It has the look-forward amounts in the earlier slide.
And Mr. Steen, we always factor in, and we're looking at these numbers and forecasting usage and revenue, and we will always put placeholders for when we think we're going to need a rate increase to ensure that we're paying attention. But every year, every month, you know, those assumptions change. These numbers, you know, going forward-looking, you know, go up and down. So as I've said to the city council, Clayton Perry in particular, who's been asking a lot of questions about the, the future, you know, this plan has always been contingent upon our conversations with the city, that we need to be coming in to, to review our financial health and to determine when the, the next opportunity would be for, you know, rate requests would be. So, so, so this plan is contingent upon us taking another look over the next, you know, twice really over the next five years to make sure where we're, where we are, where we need to be.
Well, I, I would think, verbally, you've, you've said that today, but I would think it, it'd make this, because I read this without any further explanation, is, is what, and it didn't seem right to me, so I thought it had to be, it had to be taking into account future rate increases.
It is. On slide 12.
But on this, on the surface of it, it looks like it's just factoring in the 3.85% only.
No, I appreciate that. No, on the slide 12 in the main deck, it has those assumptions built into these, the supplemental data, so appreciate your feedback, sir, and we can ensure that we footnote that appropriately.
And then go to the, the debt capitalization ratio. It's on 12, unless that's a whole lot of trouble. I don't know how long it'll take to flip over there. Okay. All right. And the same thing, that brown line there is what? The horizontal line?
Well, I lost my page again. I assume it's the threshold as well?
Yeah. That's where we want to be, and again, I don't know why the, the, the line is off on the screen, but, but that should be right around 60%.
All right. And, and, and again, at what point are you, are you factoring in a 5% increase to, to, to affect those, to affect those numbers?
In fiscal '25 and '27.
All right.
Again, consistent for, for those watching, slide 12 on the original deck, has those forecasted percents, and that's where I would.
Okay. And then the, then days, days cash on hand, which is the third metric, on page 15?
Yeah, that line should be 150 days. That's our threshold.
Oh, it's, it's a little bit on the graph below where it should be.
That's correct.
All right. Are, are you saying that as long as we, as long as we exceed these thresholds, that we're not going to get a downgrade?
I mean, there are a variety of factors, but I would say that this is one of the key factors, is ensuring that you've got financial health, and that is measured by these key metrics. You know, part of this whole exercise of the relation, that the rating agencies look at, it's not just the metrics alone, right? It is the, the relationship and the process to go about getting a rate request with our owner regulator ultimately. And so they'll look to not just our ability to get the rate request, but get a rate request that is sufficient to continue our financial health. This is how they judge that. So I, I think it's critically important that we're transparent with them and, and share to them, share with them this information, and, and as you can see, we stay above those, those thresholds that they hold accountable for.
Thank you.
Mr. Steen, I can comment a little bit on that. I have spent a lot of time with the rating agencies, not for this company, but in a previous position. I've spent many, many hours with the rating agencies. And in the discussions I briefly had with them about our three major metrics, you're going to find, if you look at those histories, we've typically done very well in our debt service ratio. They put a bogey of 1.5. We've always been 1.6, 1.7, so we, we've done very well there. Cash on hand, they want 150 days. We have typically exceeded that substantially, and going forward, they're showing 170 days. So we've been in very good shape there. The one that, that we have to really watch carefully is the debt capitalization ratio. They've set a bogey of 60, 60% debt capital ratio. If you look at that chart that came up a while ago, a few years ago, we actually dipped below that.
Can we put, can we put the chart back up as he's talking?
But since then, we've.
Mr. Kelly, let him put the chart up that you're referring to.
But, but we've continued to creep up. And the concern here is this. As you issue debt, we don't have a way to balance that against more equity. If this were a publicly traded utility, and they get to worrying about that 61% or 62%, they can float new equity and therefore change the mix of our capital structure and therefore bring that down. We cannot issue equity. Our equity is all owned by the city of San Antonio. So we are totally dependent for our growth on debt. And that is another reason why, number one, this ratio is very important, because we can only grow and sustain ourselves through debt. And number two, that the more debt that we take on, the higher risk the company has. And so I would say that the holy grail for us is that debt capitalization ratio. We've done a very good job managing particularly the first two, the, the debt service ratio, cash on hand, but the debt capitalization ratio, we've got to continue to monitor that one very, very carefully, because we cannot access the equity markets like public utilities can.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other board members?
When I look at the history of that debt capitalization, I know this financial stability has been up about every time that we do a budget, that that's come up. And I know several times, Mr. Kelly has, has commented on that right there, but we've heard that enough. The only thing that I see different on this is that we didn't put the, the number on there, like the debt service coverage ratio was 1.50. We usually have it on this sheet, and the debt capitalization is 60%. And the days cash on hand was 150. We normally have that on there. So that, that kind of, I guess that's what threw some people off. But since I've been on the committees and we've discussed it, I already know, so it didn't, it didn't bother me any, anything like that. But when I go back and look at 2016, and the debt capitalization, we were 63.69, and 2017, we were 62.21. '18, 2018, we were 61.83, and 2019, 61.90. Like Mr. Kelly said, we dipped under with 59.94 in 2020. Then we start jumping back up in 2021, and, and, you know, from this past year, it was 60 point, 60.50, so we're, we're close. And I, I know we've, I've commented to Mr. Kaczynski about this just about every time we talk, you know, how closer we are to resolving this with Mr. Garza, in, you know, in, in trying to get under. And they explained to me about the, the debt that we have and things of that, that's something that we're going to have to really focus on and, and keep, keep an eye on right, right there, because every time I asked a question here last week at a meeting, that we, in our generation plants, we had some plants to go down in the last three months. We've had three plants. We've did some rotaries, propellers, and all of that. We use some cash on hand, and then we use some debt for that. And that's because we didn't have enough money to do that, so we had to go and do that. So I kept asking, how much does that damage us with this debt capitalization? You know, it's, when you have these old generation plants, things are going to happen, and we have to pay to keep them running, because there's, they're, they're breaking down all the time. You have old plants, and they're going to always have pre-maintenance and breakdowns. And then if we don't have the cash on hand, that mean we have to borrow money. That hurt us, and we have to continue to do that. So I kept asking that question to Mr. Garza here about when he's, but, but you know the, the main thing about it? Every time we flip this script, flip the switch, the lights come on, because they're doing a good job in maintaining them and keeping them and putting them back online as fast as they go off. Not one week by, tell me how many weeks go by that I don't call you and question that? Get it from Mr. Garza.
Every day. I mean, every day.
Every day. I call him and I question this, because it's important that we maintain that light for the city and this county that we, that we serve. And if something's going on, the next question I ask, you know, if, if these things are happening, have we notified all the board members? Because I want to make sure everybody understands when they come to this table. These things right here, Mr. Kelly, I learned this from you. I watched you, how many times you brought this up, about this debt capitalization ratio. And I didn't understand it at first, because in education, we do it different. But I kept looking at it until the light finally switched and flipped on for me. And that's why I kept asking them these questions about that. So it's very important, but since I'm in the meetings and keep asking questions, then I guess I'm familiar with it. And I don't think nothing of it, but if, for, for future reference, if you would add us to it, then that would alleviate, like, we don't know what's going on. That would alleviate, you know, that we know that, that, that we're at a stage that a yellow, green, and when I see that red, I know that's very important. You know, so if you could add that in there.
Yes, sir.
Corey, any other questions by the board? You know, because we're getting ready to vote on this item, and I want to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of what we're voting on. If there's questions or comments, we have the staff right here able to answer them. And I'd like to thank Mr. Eric Wash, because we've had several meetings and discussed this with Ben Gazelle on, on this right here, and with his staff and, and all of this. And our people have worked hard. They over there, like, I remember Ben said, just about our staff, Corey has just about moved over there, because they've worked hard at it. And, and I want to thank you all for working with us through this. You know, let, let Mr. Gazelle know that I want to thank you all for the, the work that y'all put into it, because it's taken y'all time off for doing our, helping us with our job. So thank you all for that right there. And Corey has worked hard, because he's been there from the very beginning, and Rudy stepped on from Paula, when she, we stopped going to Rudy. You know, he is, he's, he's picking up. You know, he's at a learning curve on this, but he's picking it up and doing a great job on this. So appreciate the hard work he's doing. So if the board has any other questions before we move forward with the vote, so please, speak now. Because I, I do have a couple of comments that I'd like to make to this board before I move on this right here. First, I want to listen to you, Ms. Gonzalez.
I don't have particular comments about the financial picture. I have more comments about, just outside of that, I have comments, so I will wait.
Because we're going to have, we, Mayor, you have any comments?
No, I'll just, I don't have any questions. I think we've been through this presentation probably a half a dozen times or more. I do want to thank Rudy and Corey and the team for the due diligence. I remember sitting here in the summer, seeing the first projections and, and what was being considered in the rate, and really focusing on the question on process, making sure that we're narrowing the request to the things that we absolutely needed, and that those things that are still in deliberation or in the courts, or still being worked on in terms of relief. And I know that the city council also is very interested in, in how we're handling the pandemic bad debt, and allocated about $20 million for ARPA. Those things that were not determined in terms of overall magnitude were not part of the rate increase. So, you know, I think they've done great work and proper due diligence with many public meetings in narrowing the request to the things that are absolutely necessary for the utility. So again, thank you. And, and also to the employees of CPS who have been through quite a bit over the last year. They continue to do stellar work under pretty tough circumstances, and they deserve a lot of credit for what we all ultimately experience, and that is Dr. Mackey, that we want, we want to be able to see the lights turn on when we flip our switch. So again, thank you to the staff and to the employees of CPS.
Mr. Kelly?
Dr. Mackey, I do have one point I'd like to make. As you know, this is my last month on the board, and so I have received a number of calls from people talking to me about my work at the board, et cetera. One of the things I still keep hearing, though, is that they would like to assign more blame for the Yuri freeze to this company. And I dispute that. If you'll take a look at slide 20, page 57 of your supplemental information, you'll see where there are more than 65 proposed recovery plans because of winter storm Yuri. What that tells me is that we are one of many, many companies that were adversely impacted by this. And I do not, from my perspective, I do not think this company, I do not think this board, I do not think the senior man. I do not think the senior management should be involved in self-flagellation for this Yuri event. This was an act of God. It was a force majeure. It was an event that nobody, anyplace planned for. I can tell you, my friends in the corporate community with major corporations did not plan for it. There was absolutely no way to plan for it. And I think this company did as strong a job as any company could have been expected to do. Did we make some mistakes? Of course. But think of what we went through. In a period of less than two weeks, you had a 400 multiple increase in the cost of gas per BTU. 400 multiple in less than two weeks. Take a look at what happened. I'm old enough to remember the first OPEC oil shock in 1973. And they increased the price of oil from $3 to $20, roughly a seven multiple increase. Then in 1979, they did it again. Over that six-year period, they increased the price of oil from $3 to roughly $60. So it was, I mean, $3 to roughly $40. It was roughly a 14 multiple increase over six years. That was catastrophic. It threw the world into several recessions. It was absolutely considered almost the end of the world. A 14% multiple increase over six years. Here we had a 400 multiple increase over two weeks and we survived it. And so it tells me that when people complain about how we handled Yuri, I would like for us to spin the question around for them and say, what would you have done different? How would you have planned for it? How could you have reacted in the midst of this? And so I throw that out just as a compliment actually to management, the way you guys handled it. And I take great offense at people who think we could have done a better job on it, quite frankly.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Great comments.
Will be slightly different. And thank you, Mr. Kelly, for those comments because I do agree with you. What I will say that in the past months, 12 months, almost a year, the first six months, I think that we were dealing with a pandemic shock. And then we started, then winter story, Yuri. And within those first, and then personnel, within those six months, those were three major things that we were faced with that we all had to in some form or fashion, whether we agreed or not, work together to navigate that. That was six months. Every week, we met the entire summer. For the entire six months, we were meeting whether it was offline or online. Within those first six months, we were able to create RAC, implement RAC. We were, we were working with EBOC. We were working with the Committee for Emergency Preparedness. We're also now also providing feedback to the Public Utility Commission. We also elected an interim CEO. So for 12 months, in some form or fashion, this board, with our community, with our governance, we've been responses in some form or fashion. Maybe not always aligned, maybe not always in agreement, but we have responded. We have several entities that have audited us in some form or fashion. And so out of a lot of turmoil, I also believe it is an opportunity for us to move forward. And so with that being said, I do think that there's a lot to us having a need to develop a strategic plan, in my opinion, to have the ability to adapt to the multiple expectations and changing priorities with less disruption and a better way to, where we can respond faster. And where we can't, we have to be patient. But there is an opportunity to conduct a SWOT analysis, in my opinion, to be able to again, be responsive frequently to our owners. And those owners include bondholders, citizens and our governance. And so I do welcome the opportunity in the immediate future to have a third party work with us. With that being said, I was not a big proponent of a big increase. And I think part of it is that plan. I think that, yes, I would agree that we've done a lot of right things. But I will agree, I will say that we were disrupted. And what that disruption highlighted were some deficiencies and some strengths, but mainly some deficiencies and new expectation of governance and our citizens. And I do believe that there's an opportunity for us to take all the feedback from RAC, from CAC, from, you know, MUC and incorporate that into a plan, a solid plan that will sustain, that will make some immediate changes and that will address some long-term things that we need to incorporate. So as a trustee, you know, my vote today is not something that I give. It's something that I had to really, really contemplate for 12 months. And I want to thank those of you who have been patient with my direct feedback. Sometimes, you know, in my world, I get to move faster. But I will tell you that I run a much smaller organization and we're all right now very constrained and very exhausted. And all of us have to make some really tough decisions under the environmental environment that we're in, including financial constraints, you know, workforce constraints, supply issue constraints and, you know, frankly, you know, constituents that don't have patience right now. And I don't blame them. Everybody is struggling right now. But I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the staff, both at City Hall, County, as well as CPS because this has not been easy. And thank you for, for all the work that's being done and the future work that we need to do, whether we agree or not.
Sir, I don't think your mic is on.
I'm sorry. Yes, I do support the two items, 7A and 7B. However, I would like for the board to think about two things that I'm going to bring, that I'll bring up at the next board meeting. Number one, to this board and just start thinking about it because I started thinking about how long it took to the needs that we need in this bringing financial stability and making sure we do a rate case. And the other thing that I think about that we talked about is, number, number one, is I'm going to bring a draft resolution for the coal plants, Spruce 1 and 2, just to, just to bring it up for discussion, not for us to vote or do anything on it. You know, I just kind of want to get a feeling of transparency, you know, between other board members. Maybe it's something that we should do, maybe we shouldn't do. But just to make sure that I put that on the table, I will bring that up at the next board, at the next board meeting on the CEO's comments. That's number one. Number two, I keep listening about strategic plans, things of that sort. So I would like to look at a strategic plan on management structure, executive compensation, operation efficiency for cost-saving measures and the culture of CPS. And just get some feedback from fellow trustees on where we need to go with that and start discussing it, not to go back and say fault, but what we need to do with a strategic plan to be on the same page to move forward. So I would like to make sure that, that that be on the next board agenda next month. So I can, so no one can say we talking behind the scene that whatever we say, we're going to say it at the board meeting. So everybody here at one time and we, either we all on the same page. So I want to include that in because when we start talking about this rate case, then that's going to have to be a conversation, what we going to do next? Because we keep hearing about the coal plants every meeting. So is that going to be something that we need to start talking about next? But I know this time is a placeholder that we need in order to move forward. So I just want to kind of let you all know, you know, where I stand on this right here. And then we'll get to discuss it a little farther, a little more details at the next regular board meeting, this right here. But we have, at this time, we have two items. Number one, 7A, respectfully, respectfully, respectfully request your approval of a 3.85 base rate increase resolution. Item 7B, respectfully request your approval of the resolution to create a regulatory asset of up to $1 billion and pass through 4.18 million in costs starting March 1st, 2022. And with the board consent, the next, we will seek city council approval on January 13th, 2022. So I'm open the floor if there's any more comments before we discuss it. Any more discussion, any more comments before we take a motion? If there's not, then I'll ask for a motion to be on the table.
Mr. Chairman, I've taken special note of page 12 of the presentation. And I think that is page 23 in your packet. I don't know how we're baking this into our projections going forward. I'm assuming that when you've looked at your new projections for debt, et cetera, et cetera, you've baked in these two proposed increases of 5.5% in '25 and '27. So I would hope that there is some way to institutionalize this so that it either happens or at least is studied very, very carefully. I mean, who knows what might happen? We might win the lottery and not need these increases, but I wouldn't count on it. But seriously, I think that the fact that you have made that a part of this presentation, and I'm assuming that this is a serious part of the overall recommendation that you're making. And with that in mind, I feel comfortable in recommending the 3.85% increase and also the regulatory asset that you have recommended.
Can you repeat that again, Mr. Kelly? You said you're not or you are comfortable?
I do recommend, yes, both of those.
Chair Dr. Mackey, for voting clarity, if it would be okay, could we entertain the motion separately? So I believe on the... Correct. So I believe on the floor is a request for a motion for the approval of the 3.85% base increase.
So if you need to segregate those, okay. Well, if you just want to handle the 3.85, then I'll make that recommendation at this.
We have a motion by Mr. Kelly. And I agree with Mr. Kelly that I attended both city council B meetings and we did express that concern that in two years, this is just a placeholder for us to go to the next level. So the board knows, so no one can say in two years from now, it shouldn't come back up. It should be up there. So I was, I attended both city council meeting where it came up, that this is a placeholder and it's going to come up in two years again for what we need. Am I right about that, Mr. Wash at the meeting? That we said this was a placeholder?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure that...
Is placeholder the correct word? That's the word you're using?
I would say it was very clear in the conversations with the council at those B sessions that there are future rate increases and this is a beginning point. And then certainly given the considerations and the policy conversations that the RAC will have and ultimately come back to this board, that could impact those rates as well.
I'll use my jargon as well. I mean, Eric is correct. But I mean, it is a, it's a proposed financial plan and it is subject to change given, you know, the resolution of those issues. But your point is clear, there's going to be a future need. And that's what your point is as well, there'll be future need. And we will stick to that, Trustee Kelly, in terms of making sure we're not skipping that and very transparent with the board and council of how the year unfolds as we go through it.
Thank you. That's the basis on which I'm making my recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, we have a motion by Mr. Kelly on respectfully request your approval of a 3.85 base rate increase resolution. Do we have a second?
Can I make a comment before? I would say, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear about this. This rate increase or supporting this should not define what CPS is all about. And it should also not be viewed or it should signal that it just, everything's great. At the end of the day, we have a fiduciary responsibility, whether we have a placeholder or not, to meet the expectations of that financial operational plan and anticipate, and we know this, we're all planning for the worst. I don't think anybody who's in business, large or small, right now is planning that everything's going to be great the next couple of years. And so as a trustee, know that my vote that I will give today is not with, oh, everything's great, we got money. You can fix problems with money. You fix problems with leadership, with having a sound business plan and making some really tough decisions that will not make us popular. Our job is not to be always popular. Our job is just to do right and be responsible with the funds that we do receive and how we leverage those funds, regardless who's in charge. And so with that being said, and also because I have a deep respect for Ed Kelly and the process that we've just been through these past 12 months with city council, our chairman and everyone that I've worked with directly and indirectly, I will also approve the 3.85.
Do you second the motion?
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Kelly. We have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. We have, what you call the rotor?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a statement I want to read prior to voting. We're in a discussion period anyway with the motion, the second being made. I begin by harking back to Trustee Kelly's remarks at our last board meeting on December 13th about the unorthodox way this rate increase request has been handled. As Mr. Kelly noted, it differs from how rate increase requests have been handled throughout the nearly 80 years this company has been in existence. After an intense period of crunching the numbers internally, our team led by interim CEO Rudy Garza and CFO Corey Kaczynski came up with a proposed rate increase of over 10%. Now, after a series of meetings with city staff, that percentage has been whittled down to 3.85% with the idea of limiting our focus to, quote, "immediate financial pressures," unquote. So, so we're told the 3.85% will generate around $73 million annually, which will be used for such things as weatherization and infrastructure resiliency, regulatory compliance, planning for replacing our computer system and staffing. But apparently, immediate financial pressures does not include addressing the bad debt from unpaid customer bills. At our last meeting, Mr. Garza said the bad debt figure is now at $130 million. But he added, the good news is the city has given us $20 million to offset this. But what about the remaining $110 million? Mr. Garza said the figure will be substantially reduced when we resume disconnections of our delinquent residential customers early next year, or early this year. When I inquired when we'd have a good idea of the financial impact of these unpaid debts, he replied in March or April of this year, just three or four months from now. Yet the, yet the rate increase will be locked in by then, not to be revisited until two years hence. And so I ask, is this wise financial planning? I could bring up other examples of needs that are not being met. For example, a month ago, the Fourth Court of Appeals dismissed our lawsuit against ERCOT because of our failure to exhaust administrative remedies before the PUC. With the dismissal of our lawsuit, the temporary restraining order goes away and ERCOT is free to go after us for uplift charges to the tune of $45 to $50 million. Isn't this an immediate financial pressure? As I said to Messrs. Garza and Kaczynski at our last meeting, when our rate increase request is dropped from 10% to 3.85%, it's got to cause our staff serious concerns. Nevertheless, despite these misgivings, I will vote in favor of the motion. I'm voting yes because it would be imprudent, given our current financial challenges, not to do so. As a trustee deeply concerned about the financial strength of our company, I'm hoping that the 3.85% increase will be adequate to take us through the next two years. But I'm very concerned it won't. And finally, I'd like to request that these remarks be inserted into the minutes in full to memorialize my concerns at the path we're going down by limiting our rate increase request to 3.85%.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. I have a question and I'm just a little confused. Rudy, did you ever go over to the city and ask about 8 or 10%?
No, sir, that was not under my leadership.
I know, I know, I know. That's why I want to make sure to ask you. When I went over... When I went over there, there was one person, two people that did that and went over there, and that was CEO Paula Gold Williams, and Corey was in on that meeting. Mr. Wash was in on that meeting, and Ben Gazelle was in on that meeting. Ever since you came aboard, we started meeting more with them, and it whittled down from 8, 10-point-something, to 8.2 to 3.85. And that was because we don't know exactly what the numbers and adequate numbers are right now. And we put in, I keep saying a placeholder, till we can sufficiently run CPS until we can find it. Now, I trust what Corey, Ben, Eric, and Rudy were saying about that, because I begin to understand it a little more. We know it's a holding place until we can figure it out. Like you said earlier, Mr. Kaczynski, we might have to go back a little earlier once we figure out all the numbers and things like that. And that happens with an organization with a pandemic and Yuri and all the things that are transpiring. So there's no blame for anybody. You all are doing a great job. You're doing a great job. Just keep doing the job and giving us the best numbers to make the best decision for this company. That's all we ask. So I'm not asking about blaming. I want to make sure you give us the best decision. And I listened to Ben Gazelle talk about this. Because I asked, I asked the mayor, didn't I ask you to go meet with him? And ask his company, ask y'all to run the numbers and do this? I asked permission. I didn't go over there and just do that. I asked permission from the mayor. And I'm very pleased with what I'm hearing, very pleased with the hard work of this administration, the hard work that the city has been doing in trying to come up with these numbers. So don't take it as a, I'm trying to use a kind word, as a fault or a blame. You're working hard for this company. Continue to do right for the company and do right for the company. That's all I'm asking. That's all I am asking. So we have a motion by Mr. Kelly. We have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. Would you please, Ms. Ramirez, call row for item number 7A?
Just for clarity purposes, I want to confirm that discussion is over?
Yes.
Trustees Dean?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly? Chair Dr. Mackey?
Aye. I have a unanimous approval of the motion to approve the City Public Service Board of San Antonio resolution approving an increase of 3.85% to the electric and gas bait rates effective March 1, 2022, and approving amendments to the affordability discount program. Would you like me to read the entire resolution at this point or simply include it?
Please, read this one, and then we'll do the next one.
Whereas CPS Energy is the municipally-owned utility that operates the City of San Antonio's electric and gas system, providing retail services to customers within the City of San Antonio and surrounding areas. And whereas CPS Energy is required by law and its bond ordinances to impose and collect charges for the electric and gas service it provides in amounts at least sufficient to pay all operating, maintenance, depreciation, replacement, improvement, and interest charges in connection with the system. And whereas the CPS energy rate adjustment was 4.25% increase in the electric and gas base rates in November 2013. And whereas CPS Energy proposes a 3.85% increase in its electric and gas base rates in order to meet the continuing obligation to supply reliable services to its customers, meet the immediate capital and maintenance requirements of the system, meet the flow of funds requirements set out in the CPS Energy bond ordinances, and maintain a strong credit rating. And whereas the combined gas and electric rates for CPS Energy customers will remain among the lowest in the state even after the 2022 rate adjustment. And whereas CPS Energy maintains an affordability discount program available to customers who have an income at or below 125% of federal poverty guidelines and meet one of the following criteria: are elderly, are disabled, use life-sustaining medical equipment, or have children under the age of 18 years. And whereas the recommended 2022 rate adjustment would equate to an estimated $3.84 per month increase on the average residential customer bill. And CPS Energy proposes increasing the discount of the affordability discount program by $3.84 per month to mitigate the impact of the 2022 rate adjustments on low-income customers who qualify for the affordability discount program. And whereas CPS Energy proposes the following adjustments to the affordability discount program: increase electric customer monthly affordability discount from $8.55 to $11.67. And two, increase gas customer monthly affordability discount from $3.75 to $4.47 for a cumulative increase of $3.84 per month. And whereas the tariffs, once prepared, will be attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. And whereas the resolution and the revised tariffs to be attached as Exhibit A will be presented to the San Antonio City Council for review and approval on January 13, 2022. And whereas, subject to and upon the City Council's approval of the 2022 rate adjustments and the 2022 affordability discount program adjustments, such adjustments will be documented within appropriate CPS Energy records. And the 2022 rate adjustments will be communicated to and charged to all customers effective March 1, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved, the recitals and exhibit to this resolution are hereby incorporated by reference. CPS Energy Board of Trustees hereby approves and adopts the 2022 rate adjustments and the 2022 affordability discount program adjustments described in this resolution for submittal to the San Antonio City Council for approval and delegates to the interim president and CEO the authority to implement such adjustments consistent with this resolution and the San Antonio City Council's approval.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. You have a 7B, which is Resolution of the Regulatory Assets Proposal. Do we have a motion for that? I move that we approve the Resolution of Regulatory Assets Proposal. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Willis Mackey. We have a second by Ed Kelly. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? Floor is open for any board member at this time?
I will say that I'm a little still concerned about the 25 years. I mean, I understand why we have to do it. The 25-year stretch is a concern, especially with so many uncertainties and back to the debt ratio concerns. So is there any additional feedback I can get from both of you, either our CEO or Corey?
Well, the fuel expense is a pass-through, so that doesn't necessarily have an impact on our debt-to-capitalization ratio. So, you know, if we do 15 years, then that amount obviously gets ratcheted up. If we do 30 years, it gets ratcheted down. So we were looking for a balance on average in the state of Texas. The average utility, the way the average utility has done it, about $11 a month. But, you know, we have tried to keep an eye on the overall bill impact to customers, which is, as we said, on average is about $5.10. And it creates some, you know, some additional capacity. You know, if we do end up having to roll in some additional costs, you know, whatever we pay ultimately to resolve the outstanding $600 million, that also leaves some capacity in there for that. So 25 years is a good balance. As our community grows, you know, obviously you have more customers to spread that out over. That, you know, maybe that comes down from 25 years to something less, Vice Chair Gonzalez. But, you know, we were trying to be thoughtful and balanced. And that would put us on the low end across the state for how we're proposing to collect these expenses.
Trustee Gonzalez, I would tell you that the structure of this regulatory asset provides that revenue certainty to pay off the debt, whether it's 25 years or 10 years or 15, it doesn't matter. The intent is that the dollar is set to recover what we anticipate the debt service to be on whatever length. And so with that in mind, as Rudy pointed out, we focused on affordability to customers, and the 25-year was born from that. But anyways, hopefully that gives a little additional context.
Any other questions, Ms. Gonzalez? Okay. Any other board members, any questions, please? If not, Ms. Ramirez, please do a row.
Trustee Dean? Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Aye.
Chair Dr. Mackey?
Aye. Unanimous approval of the City Public Service Board of San Antonio resolution regarding the establishment of regulatory asset for the 2021 winter weather fuel cost to be amortized over a maximum of 25 years and recovered through the fuel adjustment. I'll read the full resolution into the...
Do we have a motion, Carrot 50?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Whereas CPS Energy operates a combined electric and gas utility system on behalf of the City of San Antonio with management by the CPS Energy Board of Trustees and as an independent body with control over CPS Energy's revenues and day-to-day operations. And whereas Winter Storm Yuri was a severe winter storm that impacted the continental United States during the period from approximately February 12, 2021, through February 19, 2021, causing severe strain on the Texas power grid and resulting in CPS Energy being charged extraordinary power and natural gas costs, some of which CPS Energy has alleged are egregious and illegitimate. And whereas CPS Energy continues to fight for its customers and community in disputing those power and natural gas costs it believes were egregious and illegitimate that were charged to CPS Energy during the severe weather related to Winter Storm Yuri. And whereas CPS Energy is disputing approximately $587 million of the 2021 severe winter weather costs as egregious and illegitimate. And whereas CPS Energy has incurred approximately $418 million in 2021 severe winter weather costs, it has validated as legitimate and reasonable in light of the circumstances when occurred and seeks authorization to begin recovery of these costs through the fuel adjustment. And whereas CPS Energy's financial statements are prepared in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles as prescribed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And whereas CPS Energy is subject to existing Generally Accepted Accounting Principles Statement Number 62, Clarification of Accounting and Financial Reporting Guidance contained in pre-November 30, 1989, FASB and AICPA pronouncements, and describes regulatory accounting methods available to rate regulated entities or operations and would allow CPS Energy to record its 2021 severe winter weather costs as a regulatory asset. And whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees recommends approval for the establishment of a regulatory asset for the 2021 severe winter weather costs not to exceed $1.005 billion and once paid to be amortized over a maximum of 25 years. And whereas only paid 2021 severe winter weather costs will begin to be amortized over a maximum of 25 years and recovered through the fuel adjustment. And whereas CPS Energy will brief City Council annually on the ultimate resolution of the disputed 2021 severe winter weather costs, and those resulting payments will be recommended for recovery through the fuel adjustment over a maximum of 25 years. And whereas the purpose of the regulatory asset is to mitigate the customer bill impact of the 2021 severe winter weather costs related to Winter Storm Yuri by amortizing those costs over time. And whereas City Council approval is required for the establishment of a regulatory asset and the associated recovery over the amortized period through the fuel adjustment. Now therefore, be it resolved, the recitals to this resolution are hereby incorporated by reference. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees hereby approves the establishment of a regulatory asset and the associated recovery described in this resolution for submittal to the San Antonio City Council for approval and delegates to the interim president and CEO the authority to implement such regulatory asset and associated recovery consistent with this resolution and the San Antonio City Council's approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Do we have a, that can, this about concludes our meeting, unless we have a recommendation to adjourn? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Mr. Kelly moved to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. A motion by Mr. Kelly, a second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Hey, thank you all, and have a Happy New Year's. Thank you.